Call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the August 21st, 2018 County Commission Meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder, and if you need a listening device, Craig can help you with that. First, we'll go on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Benega.
I will draw my motion.
Thank you.
You're too fast.
Oh, okay. I've moved to amend item number seven on the agenda to authorize the auditor to post notice of hearing to consider the 2018 annual BRIAN-JAG program spending plan from Minnehaha County in the city of Sioux Falls.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda, item number seven. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. If they need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from August 7th, 2018.
So move.
Second. A motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in an amount of $892,503.05.
Pay the bills.
Second, Madam Chair.
The second with a comment, Commissioner Burr.
I was going to ask the auditor to comment on a couple of bills that are in there.
Mr. Auditor, we're looking for you at the podium, please. We want it at the podium for a question.
I was going to ask you, Bob, to cover those fire insurance bills.
Yes, the refund that goes to the local fire departments comes from the insurance fund that everybody pays into, and depending on our ISO rating, which is an insurance industry standard, it involves a lot of different things. The number of buildings, type of buildings, the fire department's performance, and all those sort of things comes back. And this year, everybody got a refund, all the local fire departments did. So that's where that money comes from, and that's how it's determined. The amount that is actually determined depends on the valuation in the county, but the total amount that is out there comes from the ISO.
Thank you, Bob.
Madam Chair, and those amounts are considerable, and pushed up our -- Sioux Falls City, for example, got $471,000, and the other cities got substantial amounts also.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the bills. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is Register of Deeds official statement of revenue collected in July 2018. Item B is Metro Communications Agency 2017 financial audit, and those are on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So move.
Second.
And a motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is abatements for approval. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is authorize the auditor to post notice of a hearing to consider the 2018 annual BRIAN-JAG program spending plan from Minnehaha County in Sioux Falls. Is there a motion?
There is. I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for a compromise of lien. There are none. Move on to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak about anything that is not on today's agenda? That will move on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider the following actions regarding disposal of surplus property from Minnehaha County. Item A is a motion to declare property from Exhibit A as surplus to transfer to other county departments.
Good morning again, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. Minnehaha County is once again participating in the city of Sioux Falls annual surplus auction. That will be held Saturday, September 15th, 2018. County departments identified items they no longer found useful. They submitted a list of those items to Cindy Jepson in the auditor's office. Combined list of the items identified was sent to all county departments who were given opportunity to request transfer of any item. After county departments had an opportunity to request items, Melinda Story in the auditor's office sent out the list of remaining items to outside nonprofit agencies so they could request items. They were informed that per county policy, if more than one agency requested an item, that item had to go on the surplus sale. The items have been divided into three exhibits for your consideration and action. Exhibit A contains items that were requested by county departments for transfer. Exhibit B contains items that were requested by outside agencies, and Exhibit C contains items for sale at the surplus auction. In order to complete this process, staff is requesting you take the following actions. And I don't know how you want to do this, because there's three of them. Do you want to do them one at a time, or?
Yeah, I can do them one at a time if you want me to read them.
Motion to declare property shown on the attached Exhibit A as surplus of transfer to other county departments.
Is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? I believe this has to be unanimous. Is that correct, Olivia, since these are surplusing items?
Donation does. I'm not sure on Exhibit A.
Okay. Just the donation part, okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Second one is a motion to declare property for Exhibit B as surplus for donations to nonprofit agencies. This would have to be unanimous. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Are there any questions for Bob on this one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And Item C is a motion to declare property on Exhibit C as surplus for public auction to authorize the auditor to publish the notice of sale.
So moved.
Motion is second.
Second.
Questions on that one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, I wasn't quick enough to ask a question on the second one. The nonprofit agencies, which ones did we notify? Because I know there's ones that we normally support, but there's a lot of nonprofits out there. How did the list?
You know, I'm not entirely sure how many of them applied, but I am aware of one instance where surplus computers were requested by two of them, and so as a result of our policy, they had to go into the sale.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob. That, we will move on to item number 11, briefing of the DEFCON convention voting village demonstration of election equipment vulnerabilities and options for mitigating against a breach.
Good morning once again, Commissioners Bob Litz from the auditor's office. Last week, Jason Torring and myself had an opportunity to go to Las Vegas, to Caesar's Palace, and observe the DEFCON 26 hackers convention. And it was a large event. There were over 25,000 people there. They completely took over Caesar's Palace and then had portions of four other structure buildings, casinos, that had events in them, too. There were over 275 events held there on various things. Bitcoin, social engineering, the election hacking village, which was of particular interest to us, how to hijack a car with the new keys in. I mean, Jason, it was amazing.
There's information on pretty much anything that you can think of that's electronics.
Wow.
Electronics, and also just locks and seals. They had a portion on that that was pretty interesting, too. Anything to do with security matters. You know, we were very interested in the election hacking village, election machine hacking village, and they did have several pieces of equipment. Two of them that we noticed are still in practice today, not in this county, but there's some of them in South Dakota, and then these other, there's some DRE, the direct recording machines that electronically tabulate your vote. Those are still in play down in Georgia, part of Virginia, and some other counties. But they had those machines present there. And in particular interest was the 650 to us, because we had some, and they're still in play in South Dakota. And so there was two of those machines. How they got them, buying them off Craigslist or whatever, I don't know, but it did cause some concern, so we went to see what happened. And in the particular event of the 650, Jason and I watched them, and there was a young man, I think he was about 22 years old, graduate of, I believe, MIT, and he was working for Google. So this kid was scarily smart, but he had unfettered access to that machine, as they did, everybody did in there. They could sit and work on it as long as a kid, as long as they wanted to. And they did manage to get inside that machine, reprogram it, and change the results of a mock election that they had. I think that of note here is that, you know, our machines are locked up, and nobody's going to have four hours to sit and mess with it. Our programming comes from an outside place. It's called SeaChange Election Services. Jason and I made a trip up there earlier this year, and we're satisfied that, by and large, their security, you know, what they could tell us, it seems pretty good. You want to comment on that, Jason? SeaChange Election Services?
The physical security at their location, as far as to get in, to even get to where they print the ballots, was pretty impressive. The security of their network, considering the process that they handle, I think is going to be pretty intensive as well. They couldn't go into a whole lot of details, just because they don't want to tip anybody off, but it seemed like they had a pretty good handle on the security of everything they did.
So the way the ballot production works is the state has their section of it with the federal people, and then in these state races, they figure that those races out, put that piece of the ballot together, and then I handle the county parts in any other smaller elections, such as Soyom Conservation District. And what the state does is they have theirs in a queue, and after we're done approving ours and making sure everything is good, we send it off to SeaChange. Those two merge together to produce the ballot. I did that function just this morning, after we have inspected the ballots for two days, looking for any mistakes on them or not, but we're satisfied, so we've sent them out. Now, we're going to get our ballot proofs back here in a while, and we'll look them over carefully again before we go into printing. But the portion that does the programming for our machines, the chips, that's at SeaChange Election Services. And so we send the media to them, and then they mail it back to us by U.S. mail. And so that chain of custody is pretty intense. We get them back, and we will program the machines for that election and check them over. We run test decks through them. They produce test decks that are randomly selected, and then I also produce test decks. And each test deck has 25 ballots in it. There's 71 precincts, so 71 times 25 is what we check those machines with. I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the other players with there. You know, out of that 25,000 people that were out there, you know, there was a portion of them, I suppose, that looked like they came out of mom's basement with their laptop, but there were also some very serious academics out there. And there were all sorts of hackers, all sorts of people from all sorts of countries, and all sorts of companies in the United States. I think that, you know, overall, the people that were in that, in the election hacking machine, they were very cynical. Some of them, you know, I think, don't really understand the election process that we go through, but they're free there to hack the machines. And all the election vendors, you know, we met with ESNS. They were out there, dressed in blue jeans and T-shirts, kind of blend in. They were watching what was going on, and I got to imagine, out of the big election companies, ESNS is one of the top three. Dominion out of Canada, they're huge, and then Sequoia. Those are three of the biggest election providers in the United States. Election machinery, ballot, election services. And they are critical infrastructure, make no mistake about it. I think a lot of those people that were at the hacking convention wanted to beat them up and do public shaming and all that stuff, but interestingly enough, there was a guy named Dr. Doug Maum, and Jason and I got to have a very small intimate audience with him, and he was answering any questions we might want to have. But one of the things that he did for the media types that were out there looking for something sensational is he says, you know, they brought up the public shaming part and wanting to really attack these election vendors, and he brought up that they're critical infrastructure, and these companies have millions of dollars into researching and testing products and bringing them out with no guarantee anything ever gets bought. So we need to be careful about, you know, attacking these companies that are out there providing a service. Are there vulnerabilities? You bet they are, but they're very interested in security matters, too. While we were out there, we also met with ESNS. And Chris, I got to mention that Department of Homeland Security, Dr. Doug Maum, he is the Director of Cybersecurity at DHS, so he's not a, he's not some guy that come off the wall. He's a very intelligent man and well-versed in security.
And prior to that, he was with DARPA and I can't remember somewhere else. So he's got, he had extensive knowledge of cybersecurity threats, and he was part of the counterterrorism unit for the cybersecurity division. He's a very knowledgeable individual.
He says the federal government has a million hits at people trying to break into various systems every day. Secretary of State, too, you know, they've got the voter registration list. I had an extensive talk with Chantel before I came up here, because she wanted to know what I was going to tell you, and, you know, she revealed that they have about 5,000 attempts a week to get into the Secretary of State's thing, but you can be assured that the BIT, the Bureau of Information and Technology, and BPRO, which is our election registration provider out there, they've hardened their systems, both of them, and they're very much aware of these here, and they also don't want to tip their hand as to what they've been doing, but they've indicated that both have been very active for this election cycle. I wanted to speak a little bit about Chris Walshin from ESNS. They gave us time, and we went over some concerns that we had about our elections here in Minnehaha County. Chris, too, is no slouch. He's well-credited. He was a security officer for Health and Human Services. He was also a security officer for the Department of Veterans Affairs, the Military SEALift Command, and Defense Intelligence Agency. And like I say, now he works for ESNS, and he was there. A couple of the things that we talked to him about was on our machines, our tabulator machines, there are locks. Right now, there's eight different counties in South Dakota that have the same machines we do. When they are issued from the factory, everybody has the same lock to get in the compartment, and everybody has the same passwords. But we are changing the locks on those machines to stop somebody that could have a key from getting in the back of that machine and not be detected, and we're also changing our passwords, so they will be different than the other eight counties. Now, I don't think that the other eight counties are going to be down here, but we just wanted to put that one more level or two more levels of security onto Minnehaha County elections.
I think the biggest thing that we learned by observing everything was that there's really three key aspects to it. Basically, the vulnerabilities is the physical security of the tabulators, the physical security of the election software and the programming, and the physical security, or the actual virtual security, of the voter registration database. Those seem to be the three points of vulnerability. We need to put our trust in ESNS and SeaChange, that they are securing their software and that they're securing the product that they use to program the elections. I can say that the media that we send them, that they send back, is a special media. You can't just go and buy that off the shelf. There's actually a chip in that that audits and has an audit record, so it recognizes every single time that that piece of media is read from. So even when they're sending it to us, if we get it and we go to read from it, it's going to recognize that it's been read already, and it's going to alarm us. Same thing goes from moving the data from the 850s to a laptop in order to tabulate the data. It recognizes if there's any tampering in between there. So those are really the three areas. SeaChange is, you know, dealing with elections for a huge portion of the United States, so their security is going to be pretty top-notch. The state, and as Bob said, BIT and BPRO, are securing the voter registration database. So the thing that we can do, the changes on, is to secure the equipment that we have. And as Bob said, we're getting new locks for the machines. Part of what was there was there was an entire section just next door that was the tamper evident village, as they called it. And basically, that was tables and tables and tables that they had set up, and they were training people on how to bypass tamper evidence seals. So the tape that goes on stuff, when you peel it off and it leaves residue behind, I watched them in 15 seconds, remove some of that, put it right back on, couldn't even tell the box had been opened. They had a whole display of the tamper evidence seals that we use on voting equipment and everything else, and they had a difficulty level from one to six, and they had people competing to see how quickly they could bypass those, and how effectively they could bypass those, to the point where they had a score, scoring system from one to 10, and you got more points for up close look versus arms length versus 10 feet versus 20 feet. And I can tell you that there were some of those tamper evidence seals that we used to use on some of our equipment. I watched a kid with a piece of tin foil bypass it in under three seconds, and you could not tell that it had been used. It looked brand-new. So we're looking at moving our equipment. Right now, I think we're on the two or the three level. Maybe move that up a little bit, so that it's more evident if they have been tampered with.
Part of the problem with one, one of the seals we got was highly rated. That's the one that goes on the ballot boxes. It's a wire clip, and the only way you're going to get into that is take the thing apart, and we think that that would be evident. Chain of custody, that the ballot boxes go out, they're always in the chain of custody of somebody, including the superintendent, and we think that that's pretty strong for that one. The other lock that we had that was cause of concern was a plastic one that kind of clipped shut, and the only one we use that on is our express vote machines when we send that out there, and that also is in custody of somebody all the time. We'd like to change that, but due to the configuration of the latch itself, we have not identified a seal that will physically work on that machine that would upgrade our security on that, but we're searching that out. You know, the physical custody of the ballots, the physical custody of these machines, like Jason said, that is our ace in the hole. A lot of people think that, you know, you've got the paper ballot, and paper ballots are a good thing, believe me, but the paper ballot, if somebody can get in that machine and reprogram it, is, you know, it's susceptible, too, but that is because if somebody was able to get into your tabulation machine. As far as, like I say, the physical custody of those ballots, they're locked up at the precinct place, they bring them down that night, and we unlock them, we think that that's probably as good as it's going to get. I don't know how to improve on that. Anything else that you thought of there?
The auditing. Did you want to go on to auditing?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, for about a year now, I've been investigating a thing that's called a risk-limiting audit, and they were first tried out in Colorado. And as the auditor's office, we have paper receipts down there. They're really, they're evidence of something, but unless you audit that paper trail, there's no assurance that all those receipts have been recorded right, or that they're in fact accurate, or they balance. There is a way with our 850, DS 850 machines, that we can, we can set it up to randomly mark ballots, and then you pull those ballots out and you can do an audit with them. I'm investigating that. I rolled it out past the Secretary of State and the Pennington County Auditor about six months ago, and neither one of those were too hot on the idea. Take a change in statute number one, and then they were concerned about small counties, you know, having the ability and the finances to do that. And I guess my answer to that would be make it permissive. That way, the big counties can do it. But I'm working with ESNS on, and their machine actually has a plug-in for the random ballot marker. It's set up for that. But we're going through the details of seeing if we can do that and perform random audits on the ballots. And what it would do, the machine marks them, and then you run them back through again after the election, it pulls them out, those ones, and then you run them back through, or you can tabulate them to find out if indeed the chances of anything happened, you know, to the programming or anything like that. You can run up to a 95% assuredness that nothing happened. Like I say, that's a work in progress. You know, I think it's a coming thing to audit paper ballots. It makes sense to me, and I'd like to investigate it if we can get it inexpensive and quick. The other thing, this morning on my desk was a note from Larry Zickman, who's a legislator a lot of you know, and Larry is going to the National Conference of State Legislatures. They're having election security states teaming up convention in Lincoln, Nebraska, audit August 30th and 31st. And the gentleman from ESNS, Chris Walshin, is one of the speakers down there. But it looks like it's an interesting thing. I think it's for legislators. I'd like to sneak in there, but obviously, time constraints won't let that happen. But I'd like you to know that there's a lot of concern right now about the election thing. Every day on TV, we see somebody was attempted to be hacked into. We're very cognizant of that. You know, we get, we get some strange emails from the county, at the county every once in a while, and some of them are kind of tricky. You've got to look them over good with that social engineering deal. I send them to Jason, and we kind of kick them around down the office, look at the URL, and if it's not something that we really recognize, why, we think it's junk, we never open it. But I think the incidence of those attempts have increased here lately noticeably for me, so.
Any questions for Bob and Jason?
I'm.
Commissioner Benega. Go ahead.
Bob, I'm curious. You said it takes a statute change to be able to use this audit software for the chip, if you will. What kind of change does that require? Well, it's not, the audits aren't recognized in South Dakota right now, so I suppose we'd have to recognize them, give permission to who can do them, and say they're legitimate. And I think that for us to get that programming piece on the chips when we get them is going to have to be programmed by the ESNS or the SeaChange vendor. Excuse me, SeaChange would do that. And to do that, I think they're going to have to go through the certification process again, too. And certification process is when a vendor comes up with a new idea. Each state's got their own processes, but they come up with it, they test it, they send it to the National Institute of Testing Laboratories, a recognized laboratory for that for testing. They bring it back here. Secretary of State tests it, the state election board watches on, and they've all got to recommend that to get approved by the legislature. So it's not a, it's not a run out there and talk to legislators type thing. It's a process. But I'm aware of it. I think it's a good idea, and if we could get it done, I'd like to do that.
Mr. Bender. Commissioner Bender, did you have a comment?
I just was curious whether, going to this convention, if you found anything that you felt like we needed to address immediately. I didn't hear in your presentation anything that you learned that you thought was a major...
I think the, I think the thing that we realized when we were down there, that we really keyed in on and had the chance to start the remedy on by meeting with ESNS down there, was the fact that the, a lot of the passwords that the machines use, those are hardcoded in with the election, and those, they have, in order for them to be able to assist us, they have kind of the same. So the first thing, we were like, we need to change those. And then the other thing was just watching the people, I mean, it took, there was a couple of those machines where they had, right next door, there was the hardware hacking village, and there was lockpick people, and they said, hey, come over here and try and unlock this. And they were trying, they couldn't get it, and the guy says, well, here, hand me your pen, and pops a lock open with the pen. You know, so the two things that, the biggest things were us, were get the locks updated and get those passwords updated. And so when we met with ESNS when we were out there, that was the first thing that we said to them was, we want to update this stuff. We want to do this, and they were like, yeah, we'll absolutely get you the information on it. So they were, the stuff that we brought to them while we were out there, they were very receptive to helping us out with that. You know, they're very concerned about the process, because that's their livelihood. They want to do what they can to secure this, because if there's no faith in them...
They lose their job.
They lose business, you know.
I would tell you about those little locks that we've got on our machines, too. They, there were no slouch locks. Fred the Fixer came down, pulled one off, took it back, and they were, we were just trying to get him to replace the tumbler in there, and they couldn't do it, and they had a heck of a time running down who the vendor was for those locks. And we finally wound up ordering the tumbler from a place in Europe, and we're going to have to drill two holes out to make that, the housing accept those locks, but we will have a unique key and a unique lock to Minnehaha County when it's done.
Any additional? Commissioner Burr.
Thanks, fellas, for going to this. You know, Bob, we bought some poll books a couple of years ago from ESNS, I think. ESNS. Are they still a valid technology?
You know, actually, what we did was we purchased them in conjunction with the school district, and they wound up getting them and purchasing them all. And as, after that happened, they decided that, or that vendor that they were with wasn't, wasn't working out all that well, Heart, Inner Civic, and they were also the people who abandoned service during the last time, the primary election, and left all those counties without any service provider. And that's why the e-poll books caused, crash, caused us to not be able to upload our results until 9:45. So, but that e-poll book thing, looking back at it, you know, you guys wouldn't let me buy that, and I think it was a good decision, okay? We did buy the new machines, and that was a good decision.
So the people with those books now are, they're just doorstops?
They're, they're out of luck, and what happened in that, the last election, was BPRO, much to their credit, stepped up and tried to fill that gap in. They tried one, one election out in Rapid City, in Pennington County. It was a city election for the event center. They worked good then for, for Julie out there. When they put it under the load of an election statewide, the seven counties that had them, they collapsed, okay? And B-Pro got, got flogged for it, but I got to tell you that, he stepped up. He didn't really want that business. He stepped up trying to keep the thing going for them counties and it didn't work out. I, I got to tell you, too, you know, Julie Pearson, who'd been an auditor for thirty-eight years out there in Pennington County, she knows more, she's forgotten more than I'll ever know about elections. She was in the hot chair that time, you know, when I went out there for the State Board of Elections and, you know, an auditor of thirty-eight years, getting flogged on, beat on by people, you know, it was kind of, it was kind of disheartening. And somebody said something that I felt was totally unfair and I normally don't speak out there at the Board of Elections, but I got up and felt like I had to defend her integrity on the matter. Somebody accused her of criminal conduct in conducting the election and I, it was more than I could stand, so.
Commissioner Barth?
So Bob, that badge that you're wearing around your neck, are you under control of some other hacking individual?
I'm lifting your phone information right now as we speak, Jeff. I've got your credit cards, too, so. No, this is, this was the badge that you had to wear when you got in there.
Go ahead and show it around, I think.
It was beating against my chest plate the whole time I was out there and wore the hair off my chest, but-
So this is, this, the badge is a perfect example of the, kind of the, the concept of the DEFCON is this badge has, it's kind of hard to see, but there are little connectors right here so that you can connect badges together and the badges will interact. There's also a micro USB port on here so that you can plug this into a laptop and you can actually program the badge and change stuff on the badge. So the little thing here is actually a D-pad, like you would have on like a Nintendo, and these buttons are capacitive so that you can move the little green guy around on it. And the concept was is that there were six different color badges. The, the white one was for just a visitor and then there was red ones for the staff and there was green ones for this and that and the other thing. And if you connected to each of those different badge types, you could turn all of your letters green. So every year they do a different badge that has different abilities and stuff like that. So that's kind of the, the nexus. I mean, this is a perfect example of what DEFCON is about, is it's about just taking a piece of technology, taking a piece of hardware, software, and seeing what you can make it do. And that's, kind of comes down to the, the vote hacking village is just people going in and cracking these machines open and seeing what they can do. I mean, they had one of them playing GIFs and they had one of them playing music and the biggest thing that we saw was the, the actual digital vote counters that are still in use, you know, in eighteen states, I believe it is. They had two pallets of them that they bought on eBay for about a hundred bucks apiece. And that's what they did the mock election on and they had, you know, this election and they had a hundred and some votes cast and there was George Washington, Benedict Arnold were your options and the guy who runs the whole convention ended up winning by landslide. He wasn't even on the ballot. I mean, that's the level of interference that they were doing with those machines. The DS six-fifties that they had, they had the one cracked open, there was a Google engineer working on it and another gentleman who, I didn't catch where he was from, but they were working on that machine, plugged into it for two days and, you know, about the biggest thing that they figured out is that if you put a zip disc in with a file labeled update dot whatever, it'll automatically run it. It doesn't verify anything and I was like, whoa, I'm glad we got rid of these.
That young man that was, worked for Google, he graduated, I think we said, when he was twenty years old from MIT and then he was, went working for Google. He was scary smart, but it took him four hours to get into that and hack that DS eight fifty and change the results. So he had to have access to that machine for four hours. You know, the other thing that we kind of took away from this was, in our conversations with some of the government people and the ESNS people who've had a lot of experience with big cyber security things is that for the state's databases to get hacked, it is going to take a state actor with a lot of resources, a lot of people, a lot of electronics to do that. It's not going to come out of your, somebody's mom's basement, we don't believe. So, you know, that is, that is the big threat and of course, they've been identified as China, Russia, North Korea, and Iran. You know, as, as most of you are aware, we shut down Iran's reactors, I think, in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight, so we're not, you know, we played the game too, so.
They had a, a mock state election website set up with a voter database and they had a laptop plugged into that so that they could go in and there was, what was the first day? Somebody was at that thing for eight hours.
Long time.
And he got into, past the firewalls and onto that server, but he, after eight hours, still wasn't able to get access to that file.
That's good.
So it's, it's that level of time that needs to be taken and that's where, you know, state actors are really the only ones that are going to be able to dedicate that kind of processing power, that kind of manpower, to go in and crack something like that.
This year, from what I've read, every state is going to get an attempt at hacking from somebody. All the, all the state election databases are going to get, tried to get hacked into. Last time it was twenty-one, this time, there's no doubt in most people's minds, everybody's going to get it.
Looking for the weak link. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, Bob, I appreciate you looking out for this and I'm, you know how seriously I worry about our elections and I'm looking forward to a really, a good one this November and I'm hoping that you're planning for every aspect, not just the cyber problems. And so, let's make it happen.
Well, you know, Jeff, these are the things that keep me awake at three in the morning when I, I wake up, stare at the ceiling and wonder, did I forget to do this or do that and come to work early the next day and check. You know, there's a lot of moving parts in these elections. Part of it's out of my control, but a lot of it is in my control. At the end of the day, I'm still responsible and that's the bottom line, folks, so. But we're, we're thinking this next election's going to go pretty well from everything that we're in control of.
Thank you, guys. I think we're done with questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to go out there, too. Appreciate it.
Item number twelve is authorize the chairman to sign purchase agreements for three parcels of lands for the right of way to replace bridge structure number fifty dash two oh five dash zero six zero. DJ, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. The same bridge that we spoke about last week that we just put a, a bridge posting, a load limit on, we are planning on replacing and as part of, as, as part of the replacement process, we acquire some additional right of way around the structure itself in order to complete maintenance and, and construction of the, the bridge. There are three land parcels that butt up against this area. The, the area that we look for acquiring on, on both sides of the road is approximately twenty-five feet deep and then one hundred foot wide. So we have three parcels here that make up that twenty-five by one hundred foot square on each, each side of the road and asking for your approval of, of those right of way documents and purchases.
Questions for DJ? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. DJ, when do they think this one's going to be done?
Well, we're looking at probably late spring of next year is when we're going to start, so it should be done midsummer.
Okay, thank you. Item number thirteen is also authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County and the City of Brandon to fund a corridor study for Maple Park Street.
Commissioners, you've heard about this project the last few weeks when we've entered into agreement with the State of South Dakota for the study along Maple Street, Park Street. These last two agenda items that we should have for quite a while on this project are the funding agreements with the City of Brandon and the City of Sioux Falls. They've agreed to cost participate in our matching funds for the federal dollars that we're going to be using for this project. So just over six percent of the one hundred thousand dollar estimate is what they are agreeing to in these attached agreements. So that should be just over six thousand dollars that, from each of them that we'll receive and then we'll be paying just around eighteen thousand dollars or so. So it's really great that they've come to the table and, and willing to participate and we look forward to completing this project. So requesting your approval of both of these agreements, one with the City of Sioux Falls and one with the City of Brandon.
Questions?
Approval.
You have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen is authorize the chairman to sign agreement between the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County for the two thousand and eighteen Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program, the JAG program awarded for disparate allocations. Joe, sorry.
That's okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. What I have before you this morning is a request to sign an interlocal agreement between the county and the city for our Justice Assistant Grant Program, also known as the JAG. This is something that we've been fortunate to receive every year. It is awarded, paid to the city and then we are like a sub recipient of this award. So we receive thirty-five percent of the total amount and the city receives sixty-five. One thing interesting about this grant is it's kind of sometimes backwards because they want to know what you're going to spend it on first before they, you know, give you the final award, but they kind of tell you how much you're getting on the front end. So what we have here is the agreement that says that the City of Sioux Falls will be the, the fiscal agent for the grant and that the city pays, agrees to pay the county a total of the forty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-five cents, which is thirty-five percent of the total JAG grant award.
Any questions for Joe? Commissioner Karski?
Sure. Is this money used for like one-time expenditures, training, that type of thing, or is it used for things that are ongoing, like hiring new officers, that type of stuff?
We use our funding for kind of like a one-time expense. You're right, training or maybe equipment, stuff that is needed, but yet we don't want to have to come tap the county budget for that sort of thing. We always, you know, we're looking at for, to use this money for the county for an upgrade to our in-car camera systems. The City of Sioux Falls Police Department just recently upgraded all their systems. We have a very close working relationship, not only, you know, with the city, but then if you think of the State's Attorney's Office, they don't have to monitor two backend systems when they pull data for courts. So we're going to try to keep on the same page with them and that's what we're going to use our money for. It's, it's not all what we need for that system upgrade, but it's going to get us there. So you're exactly right.
Thank you.
And they notice that where we're posting, give, will give a list of those things that will be discussed to use that money for. So if somebody is interested in what those actual things are, that would be in that notice for post.
Correct. The, the grant does require a period of public comment to be offered before the grant is awarded, so that's where we have the posting requested earlier. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
Can I just comment that it says desperate, meaning it's not equal, not to be compared and we're always on the short end of the stick here.
Look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen is consider a resolution to refund a payment made in error on lien number DPNO number nine one four zero nine. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning. Melinda Starlee, Commission Assistant. This petition, this request for the refund is in relation to a petition that came before the commission on May fifteenth. The petitioner had requested that the lien, DPNO nine one four oh nine, be removed only insofar as it applied to the property, leaving the lien in full force against the individual named on the lien in the amount of five hundred and ninety-three dollars. The petitioner has since closed on the property, but while it closing, the title company informed her that the lien was still showing that, that it was against the property. So the lien title company took the funds and forwarded the payment to Minnehaha County. The petitioner is requesting reimbursement of the payment made in error based on the settlement agent's information. If she's refunded, the DPNO nine one four oh nine will be restored to add the balance of five hundred and ninety-three dollars and ten cents with a compromise adjustment code six ten back to the lien against the individual named on the lien. That was short and sweet.
Any questions from Melinda on this?
I would make a mo- motion to approve this. It's, it was a mistake.
Yeah. Is there a second?
A second with a comment.
Commissioner Bender?
I just, you know, the thing, this, the thing that I struggle with on this and actually had some interaction with the State's Attorney on, is that the standard is that we're supposed to act in the best interest of the county. This is a situation where the county was not at fault and we had taken proper action and amount was paid without checking with us. And so I debated, is it in the best interest of the county and of the taxpayers to do this when we didn't create this problem? But ultimately I did come down on the side of Commissioner Barth that it's the right thing to do. It was a mistake. We did not intend that this would be assessed against this property, but it was not, it was not our mistake. And so, so the, the standard of it being in the best interest of the county kind of tripped me up for a while, but, but I will support it.
A motion in a second to approve and we'll need a roll call vote.
Karski?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Hieberger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Melinda. Item number sixteen is authorize the chairman to sign a release, a release in full of all the claims from the Liberty Mutual Insurance Company and the Ohio Security Insurance Company Insurance Company Insurance Settlement. Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is a request for the chairman to be authorized to sign a release from the Liberty Mutual Insurance Company and Ohio Security Insurance Company. They are representing Nielsen Development LLC, Seal Pros Incorporated, and Kelly Nielsen. The settlement is in response to a vehicle accident that involved a Minnehaha County Sheriff's Deputy during a roadway excavation that was happening. By authorizing the chairperson to sign the release, you are accepting the payment of six thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-six cents for damages to the patrol car.
Any questions for Carol? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
In a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen is liaison reports. Any reports? Commissioner Bender?
I'd just like to mention that Commissioner Barth and I and Carol on behalf of the Commission Office attended the jail leadership meeting yesterday where we started the next phase of the jail addition project. So the, we met with the contractors, now we're meeting more with the, the contractors, the actual superintendents, the folks on the job site. We will be having weekly meetings for at least the, the next few weeks until the project kind of gets going and then we'll probably move to bi-weekly, maybe. But, you know, there wasn't a lot of new things. We talked more about process, trying to get, make sure we had communication lines established for who needed to be in on, on different decisions and communication. But it's a good group, you know, it's, it's a few different faces, but they, they seem like they were all on the same place. They're in the ground now, they got in the ground just in time for the ground to fill up with some water, but they, they are in process. You know, there's a lot of planning right now and coordinating to get things kind of done in place, but I think there'll be some digging probably beginning next week with utilities and things. And, you know, once again, I just really want to thank people who've been very patient, who've had to move their parking spots. Generally, that seems to have gone pretty well. We've, we seem to have been able to handle parking so far. We've, there's been some work on making sure we have enough ADA accessible parking spots over at Human Services, but I think we've got that under control, so. So anyway, we just keep moving forward.
Additional liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benega and I met with Metro Communications. It was the first meeting with our new mayor and Christine Erickson is on that board now also. And I would say one of the results that we had and Commissioner Karski will remember this from being there, is they are somewhat constrained by the concrete bunker that they operate in and as they need to expand, they're going to need to make changes somehow. And so we're planning on having the mayor help appoint a committee, help Director Nidering House appoint a committee to look into possible changes and possible plans going forward.
Thank you, Jeff. Additional reports? I'd like to thank both of Jeff and Jean for the work that they've done on the jail. It'll be a continued thank you because they put in a tremendous amount of hours and Commissioners Commissioners don't get paid a whole lot in the first place, and you put those hours in there that they put in on the jail, and it's, they're probably making a dollar an hour now. They're not getting paid well.
He is, certainly.
Yeah, he put in a lot. I thought maybe when we were done with that last part that you guys were going to start to not have so many, but I guess I was wrong, it's still going to be-
He's the lowest-paid lawyer in the state.
I think you're right, I think you're right.
The claim to fame for you.
Yeah, thank you very much for what you guys have done on the jail, because it is a big lift. Is there any new business?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I think it's been mentioned that there's a billboard across from our current jail operation complaining about incarceration in general, and I think that anyone that has a concern about that is welcome to come and, and listen to all the steps that we are taking to alleviate that issue and put people in a better location, whether it's for mental illness, addiction, alcohol, or just having a bad day. We don't want people in jail. We need a bigger jail because frankly, the sheriff has twenty people dropped off there every day, and he's got to do something with them. And so far, these other things haven't really been able to take the pressure off of what we call the jail, but we, we're working hard on it. It's not Minnehaha County's plan to lock up more and more people. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, good job. Any other new business? Any old business? Look for a motion to recess the commission meeting, and we will reconvene for an executive session, so is there a motion to recess?
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, we'll be back here about ten o'clock. Please?